Wednesday, August 2nd at 6:30 we will call the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. Please join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First on the agenda, we have to vote to ratify Corey Macklin's employment as DPW director?
DPW Laborer.
Whoa, I already promoted you, sorry about that. DPW Laborer, I see bright things in your future, obviously.
So I'd like to welcome Corey to board. Corey actually has the wasting licenses and the CBL license that was required out of the question we posted, so welcome on board to DPW.
Super, I'd like to make the motion.
So, a second? All in favor?
Aye. We're at Corey.
Congratulations, Corey.
Welcome. And my second mate is Sheila Stratford. Sheila has worked, has municipal experience. She's worked in the inspectional services department of municipality. And she is, I thought, the head secretary's position, if she would be an asset to the town.
Welcome Sheila. Excuse me?
Is there any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I'd like to make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congrats Sheila.
Next on the agenda is to vote to reorganize the board.
Sure, I'd like to make the motion to appoint Denise's chair.
Thank you, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to vote Jeff to vice chair.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was awkward, thank you.
You're welcome. We, I expected it would be a little awkward. Uh, okay. Uh, next on the agenda is to vote to approve an updated pledge of inventory from Borderline Liquors.
Yep, yes. Registars.
Oh, I'm sorry. Not too good, that sounded. Vote to appoint two new members to the Board of Registars.
So, Annie, do you want to take that?
Yes, so we need, we have two vacancies. We need to, um, replace them. We reached out to the Republican Town Committee and we reached out to the Democratic State Committee because right now we don't have an active Democratic Town Party. We have not heard back. They have 45 days to respond, but we have matters that need to be addressed before then. So at this point, you can appoint, we have a, I'm on the board as an unenrolled voter, we have a Democrat, and so we need to, we can appoint a Republican for a three-year term, but we have to fill the other term as a temporary, which you can fill with one of the names that was given by the Republican Party if you choose to do that, until the 45 days are up. And then we can, at that time, if we don't get anything from the Democrats, we can decide who we want to fill the temporary as a three-year term. So we, we were given three names, Robert Brodel, Claire Easter, and Carrie Pyle. I think they're all here.
Peel.
Peel, I'm sorry, Peel.
Peel.
Peel. So I don't know if you have any, and it's your choice, um, as a board as to who you appoint. So I don't know if you have any questions for any of them? I think you've got some information.
We did receive an email, uh, from Claire and from Robert. Is there anything you would like to add to what you sent to us, Claire?
I have been living here for 27 years, as, as my email explains. Been a registered nurse for 27 years. Two girls graduated from West Bridgewater High School. My family's from the town. I've been very active with the West Bridgewater Republican Town Committee. I am the Massachusetts Chair, uh, Chairwoman, not Chairwoman, for Maggie's List, which is a fellow PAC in Washington DC. I have to find conservative women and try to get them into the United States House of Senate and do a lot of fundraising. Painful, but we do it. Excuse me. And, uh, the reason I would like to, um, be on the board would be, um, because I wanted to just make sure that everything's fair, you know, impartial, and secure.
Thank you. Robert, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Uh, sure, yeah. Um, Rob Brodel, I've been a resident here for a little over 20 years. I have two daughters, both graduated from West Bridgewater High School, one just this past spring. But obviously I want to get more involved in the political process. I am a member of the Republican Committee also. I've participated, you know, in my kids' sports and things like that growing up. Beyond that, I haven't really gotten involved in a lot of town, local activities, but I'd like the opportunity to do so. So, uh, that's why I, I kind of put my name in the hat. I threw my hat in the ring, I should say. But what I can bring to the table is, I, my occupation, or my job is occupational safety and health, so I'm very observant about certain things, so maybe that's where I can help out. Beyond that, I, I hope I get one.
Thank you. And Ms. Peel?
Um, my name is Carrie Peel. Um, my husband and I moved here two years ago from Quincy. We were involved in the Quincy City Republican Committee. Were members of the West Bridgewater Republican Town Committee. We moved down here, my sister lives here with her, with her husband and son, and we've always loved the town. It's a great place to live, it's a lot more quiet than Quincy. And, um, I just want to be involved and make sure that I'm contributing as much as I possibly can. Personally, I, I work in financial services. I'm a cash, lead cash processor at Computer Share in Canton. And, um, so I have, you know, fine attention to detail.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have any questions?
No, other than the comment of, we're in an awkward position of choosing two candidates out of three great people and volunteers nonetheless. I don't like the, the thought or the process of, of saying no to somebody who wants to volunteer for something. So with that in mind, we have an opening on the Rent Control Board, as well as, who's the other, is there another? So at the moment, you know, so looking at, looking at other things, if anybody has an interest, before we make a decision, the Rent Control Board is something we are, we're talking about tonight as well. And I'm going to throw that out there. If not, we will, we get, you know, we could pay big money to, to make this decision, and we will. But I want to see if there's a volunteer in the mix.
So I'll repeat whatever, everything Jeff said is true. Rarely do we get three people to come in and volunteer their time. So it's very much appreciated that you're willing to do this. Do you have any thoughts on a motion?
Honestly, for, for lack of a better process, and again, thank you all. You just became chair, rightfully so, because you're the senior member here.
So what are you going to put it on May? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 actually, that's not what I was going to do. I wanted to point out that you were older and senior. But along with that, um, I, I guess I would be inclined to give it just to the residents who've been here, that being, or make a motion to appoint Claire and Robert just based on their, their 20-plus years in town. And, and, you know, Carrie, ask you to, you know, we will be in touch and we'd love, love to have you volunteer.
Thank you so much.
So that would be my motion to appoint, separate motions?
They have to be separate, because you have to, one as to the three-year term and one as temporary.
Okay, so I guess the first motion I'd like to make would be to appoint Claire Easter to the permanent Republican Town Seat on the registrar's.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Super. Next motion?
Congratulations, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sorry. The next motion would be for Robert Brodel as the temporary, into the temporary position on the Board of Registars.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, congratulations.
And Carrie, thank you so much. I wish we had an additional spot, but we will, uh, we will try to present some options to you as they become available to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, since the town clerk, oops. It's okay. So since the town clerk is still here, I place into my report because I was going to advise the board that, as you know, we have an empty seat for the Board of Selectmen. You do have special powers under Master General Law to be able to call for a special election. I received multiple calls over the past few weeks where people are thinking that in normal other cases, you would just appoint someone. But that is not provided in the authority of the Board of Selectmen for vacancy. So as a result of that, basically, your choices are as follows. Is it either one, the, it is a unexpired term that will expire in April of 2025. So you do have the authority to not call for an election if that's what you so desire. Now it means that there would be a vacancy until that period of time. The second option is, is that you can call for a special election. And if you were to do that this evening, the town clerk and I looked through all the dates and prepared this for you to let you know that if that is what you do desire, then October 21st would make the deadlines that are required by law, and as a result, we would make that recommendation to you. The third option is, is that if you chose not to call for an election, the residents in town do have the authority and the right to be able to petition for it. So those are all the options that are before you. And I figured, Annie was still here, in case you have any questions, you could ask either her or I.
So I thought about this carefully and didn't make any sense whatsoever to me to not call for a special election. I mean, otherwise, business could come to a standstill if Jeff and I were in disagreement about something. And we certainly can't have businesses waiting for a decision while we try to muddle through what's the proper or right thing to do. So I, I'm in the opinion we should have a special election.
And I agree, you know, Denise and I will not agree on everything, just nature, how it is. And again, I don't want to hold up the town, number one. Number two, this term doesn't end in April, right? It continues for a year.
That's correct, so it's April 2023.
So we're not, we're not putting a little Band-Aid on something. We're, we're actually filling a spot for a significant amount of time on the board. So I as well would recommend that, and that timeline to me looks...
And I think it's important to clarify among the rumors in town that, um, there was no plan to run the board with two people. That would have been silly. Plus, we don't communicate with each other on these matters. I think we, between the two of us, we have good common sense and independently came to a decision that this was the right thing to do. Again, it goes back to, we cannot let business stop because there's two of us. And like Jeff said, we're not always going to agree. So this makes the most sense for the town. So I think at this point, I will, I think this needs a vote. I will call for a motion unless, David, do you have anything to add to this?
Nope, I'm good. I just want to make sure that, that the, the motion should be as follows. Vote to call special election for an unexpired term to the Board of Selectmen on October 21st, 2023.
2020?
October 21st, 2023.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that since you voted for that, nomination papers will be available tomorrow.
Will somebody post that? Is that?
I will post it in the morning.
Okay.
I have everything ready to go, just in case you voted yes. And so it will get posted first in the morning.
How long do they have to turn in nomination papers with signatures?
Nomination papers are due to be filed with the Board of Registars on September 1st by 5:00.
Any questions from anyone about the process or anything? Yes?
How many signatures do they have to have?
Thirty-three.
I didn't hear, sorry.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. And we strongly recommend that, um, candidates get more than 33 signatures because if the signature is illegible, it may not be counted. And sometimes folks with good intentions will sign papers not realizing they are registered. So always good to get maybe 40.
Yeah.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Move on. Vote to approve an updated pledge of inventory from Borderline Liquors.
Uh, before we start this, I just got to, that's okay, I just got to say I've got to recuse myself from this discussion. So, I work in the beverage business.
Understood. So this is just a pledge to their bank, um, spaces, I'm not sure whether I...
Excuse me, do you mind just introducing yourself?
Sure.
Thank you.
Matthew Brodel, the attorney for Borderline. So this is, basically, they finance the build-out of their business with Rockland Trust. And Rockland Trust is just requesting a pledge of that license. So I don't know, under your opinion, that would still be something that you would be flipping out on?
Yeah.
Just simply nothing will be able to move until after this election.
So, so there...
Well, no, we, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. There, there are ways to resolve this.
Okay.
So unfortunately, we can't resolve it tonight.
Yeah.
So it would mean we'd have to postpone to the next meeting.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So, though fortunately, the legislature does envision these things will occur at times, so you can invoke the rule of necessity. So you'll see later on in the agenda, we're going to invoke that for a different purpose because we were aware of the conflict prior to the agenda being posted. I wasn't aware of the conflict prior to this agenda being posted, so I couldn't put it on. So Selectmen Ryan has informed me of such. So as a result, I think the wise thing to do, because it would only be fair to your clients, you don't have to come back a second time unless you choose to, is that if you want to be able to provide any information to the board now, that way Denise can ask any questions. And then at the next meeting, which is scheduled for September 6th, I will notice the town through the agenda that we will invoke the rule of necessity. And that way Jeff will make a disclosure, but then be able to legally vote at that point.
So as I stated, this is a new package store town. These folks finance the build-out of this store through Rockland Trust who lent money. As a result of that, Rockland Trust is asking for a pledge of that license. Basically, a secure on their commissary note. When that's done, the ABCC requires it a game town approval and state approval. That's essentially what will be before the board.
And September 6th won't cause any harm to your file?
No, no.
How many square feet is the building? Some who is saying tonight that's over 10,000?
Yeah, that I don't know. Yeah, it wouldn't be encompassing, this application. I know it's a good-sized store.
Yeah, that's what I heard, I was surprised.
Yeah.
I can verify that.
Oh, okay. All right, so, and, you know, unless you have anything else to add?
No, I don't think it's overly complex, so.
Okay. So we'll be postponing this, yeah, continuing it into the meeting of September 6th?
That's correct.
Is that the next meeting?
Right.
September 6th?
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about the delay. Okay, vote to approve FY '23 budget transfers. David, could you elaborate on that, please?
Yep, so as you know, we always set a budget in January of a year that goes to town meeting in May, and then we have until the following June to be able to expend those funds. So, you know, on a 40-42 million dollar budget, it's going to be impossible that you're always going to be able to guess exactly right. And we do a pretty good job. Most towns will move sometimes millions of dollars. In this case, it's only, it's less than a couple hundred grand. And as you can see, most of that is snow and ice. That is by, by, um, by default, that you always are going to under-budget for your snow and ice budget because the town allows you to be able to deficit spend. I mean, there's a, there's a reason why you have to do that. If anybody asks questions, I'll answer it. With that said, I'll just quickly run through it. The ADA Committee is over by $2,500, but the Board of Selectmen knew that because in order for us to secure a grant, we had to name an ADA coordinator in the middle of the season, which we were unaware of during budget time. Nice thing is, the grant came in, it was $50,000. To spend $2,500 to get 50 grand was a pretty good deal. So I think that the board really showed a lot of good leadership on that. The town hall, what we did was, we just put new air conditioners in all of the offices. Most of them either had none or had old ones that did not work. We had secured funding at town hall, at town meeting in 2022. Unfortunately, after doing that, we all have know as what's going on with price inflation, and we were unable to be able to secure a quote that was within the guidelines. We waited a year. We were all hoping that inflation was going to abate, and unfortunately, it didn't. So again, going out to bid, we got the lowest price. But it was either have another year where nobody had ACs or install them and potentially see prices continue to increase over the next year. So we made a decision to spend the money this year, so we have to move $30,000 to cover the air conditioning cost. Inspector of Wires, it's a $23,000 budget. They're only off by $58, but we have to round up. Snow and ice is 115,000. So even though this winter was not that bad of a winter, we do budget 91,000. So basically, that means in a winter without much going on, because you still have to put salt down, you still have to bring people in for overtime. You know, $200,000 is what we actually spent. Again, lower than most preceding years. And then solid waste, this has happened the last handful of years, is that more people come in town. We have not really increased that line. And we have two phenomenon that is going on. One is that we're seeing an increase in people moving into town, so therefore they are using the transfer station at a higher level. And the second is, is that as the state of Massachusetts has legitimately done us no favors and continue to consolidate as to what you can do with solid waste, we all know that when you squeeze supply, then price is going to go up. So unfortunately, the tip fee for that has got, continued to go up. But again, on a couple hundred thousand dollar budget, we only missed by 10 grand. So with that said, we total it up, it's 157,700. We do this every single year, as every other municipality does. I will ask the Board of Selectmen to take a vote, to take it from our benefits budget. We always have additional money in our benefits budget because that's how we fund, for example, health insurance. And by law, everybody is entitled to it. So I always budget in case everybody in town takes health insurance. Obviously, if a few people don't, you have money left over, which is why we take it from that budget. So with that said, I would ask for a vote from the Board of Selectmen to move 157,700 from the benefits budget to be able to offset the additional budgets that are listed for fiscal year 2023.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I'd make the motion.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on town-wide communication?
Sure, this is me. I ran back in April. One of the things I, that I brought up is something that I feel the town can improve on is just, is just communication, specifically from, from government to our residents. I don't think we hide everything, I hide anything. I think we're fully transparent, but the information is posted on our website, and you have to come and find it to get the information. As a candidate, it took me a while just to find the bylaws and other things along those lines. My original intention was to bring this up in September. However, in lieu of recent events, when I say that, water main break, the no boil order from the Water Department, as well as somewhere in the middle of that, the police were hunting for somebody. And there were, you know, helicopters up above and things along those lines. And I think those are, those are three easy examples to bring forward to, to highlight the fact that we need to, we need to develop a system that, that will push information to residents other than Facebook. You know, and I mean, let's face it, Facebook is our, is our primary method of communication at the moment. And I would like to, I would, not that I would eliminate Facebook, but in case of emergencies, water, you know, the Water Department, things along those lines, I would like to, I would like, at the end of the day, right now, what I'd like to do is, is get together, form a committee. The Water Department, Dylan from the Water Department has reached out. It's something, you know, he and I had talked about when I was a candidate. And he has some great ideas, but I would, you know, like to form a committee, get anybody involved that, that would be interested. I would, I would hope fire, police, DPW, things like that. Figure out the correct mechanism to move forward. And then obviously, there need to be guidelines and everything else so we don't get, we don't get peppered with text messages and things along those lines. Right now, I, I think the town falls a little short in terms of pushing information forward to the residents, especially, you know, we didn't quite have a tornado this past weekend, but events like that just highlight the need to be able to communicate effectively in times of, you know, in times of, I don't say trouble, but concern. So again, it's my desire at this point to, to begin the process to form a committee and find people, obviously open to public as well as departments inside. I didn't see you sitting back there, Dylan. See, I did that without knowing you were here. But, but with that, I think, you know, it's an important thing. Obviously, Dylan being here also believes in it. And I've heard from a couple of other people, just as I had mentioned it as a candidate, that might be interested, so that would be my...
I, I agree with you. It is, can be difficult to search the town's website, even if you have a keyword that you think might be helpful. It's not always helpful. And I think Dylan's done a great job since he's joined the Water Department of trying to communicate. He's put information out on Facebook, he's answered questions, so commend you for that, Dylan.
You know, but it, you know, as, as great as it is, you know, the hub, you got to sort in a certain way to get the reasonable, you know, it's just, it's not what it should be.
It's not the way it should be.
It's, it's the best we got right now, and for that, we're grateful. But again, I think we can present that information better, so. Thank you for volunteering. And, and he's already done some work to, to get us started, so Dylan's somewhat leading the charge here. I'm grateful for that.
I think it's a great idea. I support it 100%.
So what do you want to see for next steps?
I'd like to, you know, at this point, I would like to, you know, start the process of forming a committee. Reach out to key departments, see if they want to participate.
Do you want, do you want to name a committee at your next meeting?
Yeah.
Are you going to include some residents as well as heads of departments?
Yeah, and that's something we will have to post on Facebook, right? Because that is what we have.
I think we might have a volunteer. I'm not pushing you or anything, I'm just, you know, just mentioning it.
I do have a question. Other than social media, back in the day, we just had the, you know, the reverse calls. Everybody had a landline. Nobody has a landline anymore. Everybody's got cell phones, but we don't have, we don't have everybody's cellphone numbers out there. So other than social media, how else could you...
This would be something, I, I think our push as a committee would be to get people to sign up and put signage around town, hey, you know, QR codes, that type of thing, join our, join our list. I, I don't think we could force everybody into it. But we'll let people know.
The other complication that comes up, you know, email used to be a great means of communication, but now I delete everything.
Everybody deletes everything, yeah.
It's too much, coming at once, so, some creativity.
Yep, but I think there are many vehicles out there. I think our website might even work as it is. But that's all stuff we can explore and, and try to come back with a, with a recommendation, with a cost. My goal would be to get it, you know, before town meeting.
I think even just making, making the website more intuitive with pictures versus trying to search titles, sometimes that might, is more helpful. So commend that, that idea. Do we need to take a vote, or can we just move forward with that?
I'll place that on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Super, thank you.
Site plan review, zoning board of appeals for a variance at 44 South Main Street, a 10 by 20, I'm sorry, 10 by 200 commercial building.
Yeah, so right now, this is just before the zoning board of appeals for a variance. Assuming the variance is approved, then it would go back before them for a, for a site plan review, for a special permit. But you'll know where the old Bunty Golf used to be, between Route 106E and South Main Street. There is about three, three and a half acres, half of it is wet. Undeveloped, couple of old buildings just sitting there and falling apart. So right now, there's a purchase and sale agreement from the current owner to the person who's looking to purchase. And they are looking to add, basically hardscaping as a retail business. So think if you want to do something for patio or, you know, buy stone, that type of items. So they're looking to add the 100 by 200 foot commercial building. Right now, the dimensional requirements state that they are, they're about 15 feet less than what the dimension... less than what the dimensional requirements allow. So that's why they will have to ask for a variance first. If it does not get approved, the process stops. If it does get approved, then the Board of Appeals will then entertain a special permit. I just figured we could place it on the agenda now instead of having to wait until later date if there's any concerns or comments. In that way, the zoning board of appeals will have them at this time instead of having to wait till the future.
I'd love to see something developed on that property. It just, I'm not necessarily a huge fan of development, but the property looks awful. That would be an improvement.
Sorry, sorry about that. What's the zone there? It's zoned commercial, or is it?
No, it's town center, so it's mixed, it's mixed use. So it's, business is allowed. And again, it would be a retail establishment, so business is allowed in that district.
So obviously, there's going to be outside storage.
There will be some outside storage. My guess is, I mean, that's a pretty large building. You know, it's twenty thousand square feet, so my guess is they'll have some inside. But yes, the, the narrative does state that they will have some storage outside.
And is this, it's going to be retail and commercial sales, or what's their objective?
Right now, it just says retail, but I don't know necessarily if that means retail, direct to consumer and/or direct to, as a wholesaler. But right now, the way it's written, it looks like it would be for retail. But I do not want to mislead anyone and say that they may not also retail as a wholesaler as well. It's just not in the narrative.
So my, my iPad went off, so I can't see all of this, so I have to see it up here. Thank you. So I consider this contract a storage yard? That's really what it comes down to? And? I'm not particularly in favor of a contracted storage yard in town center. My experience has been that, especially when you're doing rock and large piles of mulch and all that, it's going to be coming through. Plus, you, you have to have dust mitigation, because if you do have piles of sand, mulch, and all that, it's windy, it's gonna blow across the road unless they have adequate dust mitigation. So I, I, I know this, all it is is our recommendation. My opinion, I'd start it with, I'm not in favor of it. But if they can provide adequate dust mitigation, what's their hours of operation?
Seven AM to five PM, Monday through Saturday.
Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday.
And I'm sorry, this is retail, or this is?
Retail.
And we don't know exactly what products?
It looks like it's hardscaped, so it looks like it's stone, cement, mulch, loom, that type of stuff. So again, based in those hours, I'd have to presume that some of it's going to have to be wholesale. Because again, if you're gonna run retail, you're gonna want to be there after hours, eight o'clock at night, for example. But according to the narrative, right now, they only have posted at seven AM to five PM.
Okay. Also, I would like to see some sort of vegetation around the property too, because even if you have the dust mitigation, your water or whatever they're going to use, preferably not our water. If they could truck it in or whatever resources they might have available to them. That's a possibility. I don't know if we can include that, if it's possible, I'd like to see that. But definitely vegetation around the property to also act as some sort of dust mitigation.
Yeah, I'm not particularly interested in a commercial yard right there, which with those hours, it leads me to believe that was a true retail store.
If that's the case, then what I can do is we can send comments and simply state that you are in favor of it. If it's retail, you're not in favor of it as a wholesale.
That would be my.
Yes.
I, I believe it was a con con meeting. I'm not sure what, but the applicant said that you wanted to connect the two roads through his parking lot. I can't tell if, if that was done, but I don't think that should be done in any case, because that'd be a cut through and traffic.
Do you know anything about that, David?
I don't, but I can see up top, those are all delineated as wetland areas. So I think they would have a hard time being able to cross over wetland areas in order to do that. Dylan, I wasn't at the conservation, so I don't, did they actually take a vote and discuss it?
He said that, that was something that he wanted to, I'm sorry, it might have been planning board. He said that was something that he wanted to do, and they expressed the same concerns. But I haven't seen the plan yet.
I think conservation would struggle with that. I mean, obviously, it's their call, but I don't believe that they would be able to cross wetland areas for a result of that. There is a provision under the Wetland Protection Act that you can allow a crossing, but usually, that's only because you have no other options. And in this case here, again, I can't speak for conservation, but I, I all this is just, just trying to make it a little bit more convenient for somebody. I can't see that happening. But again, that would have to be a conservation decision.
And that would be connecting twenty-eight and one oh six? Wouldn't that also include Mass Highway? Or, I mean, if this, what he's talking about doing is creating a road through there to connect one oh six and twenty-eight, that's?
Yep, so it's the first I'm hearing about. I mean, Dylan heard it at that other hearing. It's not in the narrative from what at least I read. So yes, if it does include Route twenty-eight, I would assume that they would have to also secure some type of Mass DOT approval as well, since twenty-eight is a state road.
Yeah, it doesn't have a strike of customers from both sides, but we all know that it'll be a cut through. Does say, it says pay a bit.
I'd be concerned about the traffic, the congestion, the trucks right in that general area. I, I.
There's a lot of truckloads going in and out of one twenty-eight.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments to add?
No, if it was a retail facility, I think I, you're right. But if it's commercial, the number of trucks, everything else increases significantly.
So I think hours of operation too, I would not be in favor of seven, seven to five, is that what they wanted? I would say nine to five, ten to five, probably nine. Nine to five would be okay.
I mean, if they're competing with Lowe's, I think you gotta let them go when, when the hours are. But again, are they competing with Lowe's? Are they a wholesale operation? That would be my concern. Again, retail, you wanna, you wanna compete, that's fine. But wholesale, to the point of, I think, most people here, the number of trucks in and out of there on a daily basis is not something.
I know that land is sad for a long time, and it's not attractive the way it is. And there's been some vandalism down there as well, but just not that highly in favor of this, so if we could just pass along our sentiments along with our recommendations?
Yep, we will, and, and I, I want to make sure that I'm capturing it correctly, that I assume that you would not be in favor as well. There would be a connected vote in between.
Not in favor of that, I don't. Done with that subject? Communications and reports from boards, commissions, and town officials. First, we have our vote to accept Police Chief Flaherty's retirement date.
Yeah, so this is, yeah, this is.
Yeah, we all feel the same.
Yeah, it's, it really is a sad day. You know, Vic has done such a nice job. As he says in his letter, he's been here for thirty-five years. I've been very fortunate to work with him for over ten. I have said this, you know, I go to plenty of manager meetings. I have, I love boasting about West Bridgewater and specifically about Chief Flaherty. I think that we've been very fortunate. My personal opinion, I think we have the best chief in Massachusetts. He does an excellent job. The department is extremely well-run. We don't have a lot of issues or problems. And the nice thing that he has really done is that he's done a lot with community policing. And, you know, there's still chiefs out there that just want to arrest everybody. And obviously, if somebody does something wrong, you have to do that. But he has really been good about trying to build more with the community, starting with the schools and putting people on bikes, and, and morale has gone up as a result of it. So it's sad, but he's looking forward to golfing more. So, and I can't fault him, he certainly earned it. So with that said, his last date, he would be retiring would be August ninth.
Wow.
Well, there's, there's more to come.
There's more, there's more.
So I think, I think I would, oh, go ahead.
So I think first, we will vote to accept the retirement date, and then we can move into the next stage, which should make everyone happy. So is there a motion to accept Vic, Police Chief Flaherty's retirement date?
With regret, yes.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye. So the next item is to approve a provisional contract with Chief Flaherty for the end of the year. So the reason we'll do this is because it's going to take us four, five months in order to be able to appoint a chief, because we have civil service. Our department, as a result, would do have to follow civil service guidelines. So with that said, is that we would pay him a salary that actually is going to be less than what he would make if he was full-time. But again, recall, he'll, by September or October, he'll start to draw his pension. So it saves us money. We still have the best person, as I said earlier, to be the chief. I've basically told him he still doesn't get to golf until next year. But the truth of the matter is, is that this is going to allow a seamless transition, so that as we look to appoint a new chief, we still have his leadership there. So I think that this is a really win-win situation for both the chief and for the town and for the department.
So I, I agree with you. This is a win-win. Everyone just, you know, everyone should be able to retire when they want to retire and just say goodbye. But Vic, being the ultimate professional, said, yes, I do want to retire, but he would be willing to stay on and assist us through this transition period.
No, I agree. I want to echo just a little bit of what David said, and I hope there's a, there's a more formal time that we can say thank you. But he, you know, been in this town for twenty-three years. I was here with the previous chief and here with Vic, and I think one of the biggest things he did was the community piece, but, but specifically at a time where a lot more police departments were going a little more military in style. He went the other way. You know, you see it in the schools. You also see it at the senior center, where there's a police officer handing out the grab and goes. He's reached out in, in so many different ways to the community. And that should be a feather in his cap, or in his golf bag, as it might be. But it's just one of those things that we're grateful for, and hopefully whoever his successor is, is, can continue on with this type of, that type of role, so.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to appoint former Chief Flaherty as the provisional police chief.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to inform civil service that the town is initiating an assessment process to appoint a permanent police chief.
So that's really a motion, so we're just following the process. So once I have that authorization from you, obviously, everybody's spoken to civil service, but once I have your authorization from you, we will put a formal communication into civil service. And then at that point, we'll initiate the process, notify everybody that we need to notify, so that way they can be prepared for the assessment. My guess is, based on the time period that it needs to be allowed, the assessment will be conducted sometime in late October through mid-November. And then that means in December, we would be potentially looking to appoint a new chief, assuming everybody passes and, and all those things.
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to accept Maya Lee's resignation from Cable Access Media.
Make that motion.
I'll second. Well, Miss Maya, she did a great job.
Yes.
Vote to appoint Steve Barker to the Open Space and Recreation Committee?
Make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to approve the meeting minutes of June seventh, twenty twenty-three?
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion on Open Space Committee's future goals.
So this was a communication from the Open Space that looks like they are working on an open space plan. So the chairwoman sent that over to us to let the board know that there is a meeting scheduled on August tenth at seven PM. If you are interested in being able to attend, or if you would like to speak to her, she's provided both her email address and her phone number in case there was any input you want to provide prior to the meeting.
Fantastic. I am, I have another commitment that evening, but I will reach out between now and then.
I'll reach out as well. Might have something that day, but I'm not sure. I'll check. Vote on fiscal year twenty-four appointments to boards, committees approved by the Board of Selectmen, specifically Conservation Commission, Mobile Home Rent Control Board, TIF Review Board, and Victor R. Flaherty Senior Civic Award Committee.
So we appointed, or the board appointed at last meeting, all of your FY twenty-four appointments. You know, it's about two hundred. We missed one. So Mo McCarthy was up for reappointment to the Conservation Commission, so as a result, I would ask you for that vote to reappoint Mo to the Conservation Commission.
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the second is, is that the three committees that you also read, the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, the TIF Review Board, and the Vic Flaherty Civic Senior Award, all three of them Anthony Kenneyhan sat on. His role as a selectman, he sat on as a TIF Review Board and on the Vic Flaherty Senior Award. At that time, obviously, his resignation came in earlier that day, so the board made a motion to appoint everybody that was before them, excluding these three. We thought it was important to put it back before you, so that way residents are aware that there is a vacancy in the Mobile Home Rent Control Board, and that is an at-large seat. Anybody can fill it. The TIF Review Board is a Board of Selectmen seat, and the Vic Flaherty Civic Senior Award Committee is a selectmen seat, and is normally going to be the chair of the board at the time of town meeting when it is awarded to that resident. So that would be whoever you believe is going to be chair in twenty twenty-four, will normally fulfill that role.
So usually, with the reorganization, you know, with an election reorganization, I'll move down to clerk. You would move to chairman? So I would make a motion for Jeff to be on the Victor R. Flaherty Senior Civic Award Committee?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's an odd process when there's only two of you. It really is. I'd be willing to be on the TIF Review Board.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion for that.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we have the, the Mobile Home Rent Control Board. That does not need to be a selectman.
No, Anthony sat on it because quite frankly, he stepped up. At one time, there was only one board member and they couldn't meet. And it was literally, it went six or seven months, and, and there was no business that could be done. And as a result, he volunteered to do it just so they can make, they can meet. At this point, there have been more members that have been added, so they can conduct business, but there isn't vacancy for it.
So again, this, this is an issue in town, that we don't have people stepping up all the time to volunteer, and issues come to a standstill. So is there anyone here who would be interested? Really? Well, thank you. That was a surprise. Uh, so do we, can we vote on that tonight, or do we need to let that sit for the next meeting?
It is your choice. It's on the agenda, so it's properly noticed. If you'd like to take that vote tonight, you can. If you would like to wait so that would see if anybody else wants to apply, it's entirely your choice.
So I thi, I think we should let it sit for a week, just to give other folks an opportunity if they're interested. I, I don't think it'll be a stampede, but we can let it sit out there just to, so the rumor mill can carry that there isn't open, uh, seat available, and hopefully, maybe someone else will apply as well. And I think that's all we need to do on that item?
Yes.
Okay, next is I vote to appoint ADA coordinator, and the rule of necessity will need to be invoked. So last time we met, there was a, a list of appointments, and I mistakenly voted, including Marcy Lee. There is a conflict because she works for me, she works with me, and I really should have recused myself on that vote. So immediately following the meeting, when I realized what I'd done, I sent an email to Dave and I said, oops, made a mistake. So that's why this is back on the agenda tonight. But back to the topic of we only have two of us, so. So if I was not able to vote, we could not appoint an ADA coordinator. So we are invoking the rule of necessity. David, do you want to explain that at all? I know you did earlier, but if you want to add anything about why?
So, yes, so when, again, when the board is unable to be able to vote, not because there's not enough board members, but because the only way to be able to vote is for somebody who makes a proper disclosure, which you did. You know, there would, uh, providing that there is a conflict. Um, the legislature provides this by statute. So as a result, now that you have made your disclosure, what I would ask the board to do is to vote to actually invoke the, the rule of necessity. And from there, you would then take a vote to appoint the ADA coordinator. And by doing so, you're noticing the public that you have a conflict, you have disclosed your conflict, you would prefer not to vote. You have no choice but to vote, and by invoking the rule of necessity, you are now allowed to vote.
All right. So I'd like to make that motion to invoke the rule of necessity.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I, I would like to make the appointment to, uh, appoint Marcy as the ADA coordinator. What David had mentioned earlier, I think the salary is three thousand dollars?
That is correct.
Three thousand dollars, and it's the first time I've heard of the ADA committee since Marcy joined it. The ADA committing, receiving a grant, and this was for fifty thousand dollars. So they, they all worked together as a team. They did a great job. Debbie Colley is the chairperson of that board. Great job by all of you and your team.
No, I have no issue.
Okay.
Make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any questions? Correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. Do we have any correspondence? No? Okay. Public comment period. We have a public but no comments. Okay.
Just run with it. Don't.
Keep moving on, folks. Okay, okay, okay. All right. Yes. So that's something that could be looked at. I will tell you that, well, I was approached about that before I was a selectman. And my feelings about it was this, that right now the water department sets their own rates based on usage and their budget and all of that. Over here, we're setting tax rates. What I would never want to see happen, not to say we would, but again, this is before I was selectman and this was my thoughts. If the town was in need of revenue and for some reason they didn't set their rates right on the tax side, would they then turn to increase the water rates? Right now, the water department is, they're responsible for their own budget. They can go for grants. They can hire. They have their own set of responsibilities as an enterprise fund. So quite frankly, I, I'm mixed at this point as to whether or not it should be, but just out of curiosity, why do you think it should?
Well, I look at, you're going to hire a civil engineer to replace Chris Hynantelli, right? Civil engineer in a corporation to handle every building in this area.
So you, you might not have read the job description right. Um, we never said we.
Well, I'm just saying that, like.
Right, let me finish, please. Thank you. We never said we were hiring a civil engineer. It started out with a job description that recommended a civil engineer degree, but we suggested removing that because you could have someone with a business degree and a very valuable.
It's not, not the same as an engineer.
Still not done. Still not finished. Um, not a civ- civil engineer, but they have a business stu- degree, a great formal education. But they also have experience in many other areas and the required, I believe it's seven to ten years in, um, D P W experience with some rela- relationship thereof.
Yes, as to preferences, seven to ten years, um, in a requirement of at least a bachelor's degree.
Yeah, so when we had the meeting, Steve, um, Jeff and I.
I'm just saying, I mean, I don't, I see all, a lot of this stuff was proposed to different selectmen in writing and nothing's been done.
What was proposed?
We had, when we had that strategic business planning room, that was proposed to look at the water department to bring it back under control by the town.
When was that? What year?
Few years ago.
Was that Nancy?
Three years ago?
Is that, was that one of Nancy Maloney's, Selectman Maloney's?
Yes, she was, yeah. She ran, also ran the committee.
Okay. Yeah.
So that had to be about eight to nine years ago?
I attended those meetings. It was a while ago.
I don't think so. I think it was, he was just hired.
Is it a? Is it a committee you would like to, um, revive and be on?
I don't have much interest in committees because I don't see that they accomplish much.
Okay, well, I, I, I have to. I have to disagree with that because we do have many volunteers in town that spend their personal time devoted to the town. They've joined volunteer committees. And while maybe the outcome of what they do may not be appreciated, the fact that they're willing to dedicate their time is appreciated. And they do make efforts. I mean, one of the biggest tragedies I saw happen was when we had a group of volunteers for the Russo fields. And they did, they worked very hard for months trying to come up with a plan and options for the town. And it wasn't their fault that the economy just tanked. Um, you know, we hit high gas prices, high food prices and everything else. And he- here, these folks had to come before everyone and say, I'd like you to spend eighteen million dollars or nine million dollars. So their, their efforts were greatly appreciated. It was unfortunate. It just came upon those economic times. So I, I applaud any person who's willing to join a committee, start a committee, and, and work towards the greater good for the whole town. And if you think this is a, something we should be pursuing, feel free to get some residents together, come to a meeting. We'd like to hear.
We really wanted, I just give you two hundred votes, signatures. That would be it.
Okay, go do it.
I look.
Okay, good.
But I just wanted to know, usually us, we elect you to run this town.
Right.
So why wouldn't you look at it? Yeah, you just, you're talking about the water.
Well, the, the only person we're hearing that seems to think there's an interest in it right now is you.
Yes.
So you're saying there's two hundred out, others out there? So please feel free, you know, feel free to do it. I mean, we'd be interested.
I think you should look at it in the organization of the town.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we do. Okay. Thank you.
It's not a complicated thing to run.
Right, it's not. Okay. Are, are you finished?
Yeah, for that part.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you. Okay, um, any, so you have any other public comments? No? Okay. Um, Town Administrator's Report.
So thank you. So we reach, I've heard from a couple of residents, Christopher Trudell and also Beth Quinn. Um, they have both expressed their concerns about speed on Matfield Street and on Plain Streets. Um, so the police chief and I went out, we visited the roads. So basically the way we have it set up right now is that when you come off Route twenty-eight and you go onto Matfield, that's currently posted at forty. Um, and then it clearly, uh, is defined as a thickly settled area per Mass General Law, which means that the selectman, without having to do a traffic study, can drop it down to thirty if you so choose. Um, and then there is a curve near Esther Drive, which is where, uh, the housing authority is, that drops to twenty-five. And then after that, it is unposted all the way up to Plain Street. In both directions on Plain Street, it's posted at thirty-five. And what's particularly interesting is that where it's posted on thirty-five on the Brockton side is that Brockton, uh, on their side is actually posted at thirty. So it's interesting because somebody coming from that, from that area is going to be required to be at thirty, can accelerate to thirty-five, and within about a third of a mile comes to a stop sign. So we're authorizing them to accelerate to stop. It doesn't make a lot of sense, and there's no doubt that that area has been built up over time. So as a result, um, what the chiefs and I recommendation is, is that exclusive of that curve that is currently posted at twenty-five miles an hour, we are asking the Board of Selectmen to vote that on Matfield Street, on Belmont Street, and on Plain Street to amend all of them to thirty miles per hour, and the D P W will then post accordingly.
Any discussion?
Beth, would you like to make, you, you've lived through this, so.
I've lived, yes, since they had the stop sign. The amount of vehicles that are speeding from Brockton into the town, um, it, I've been sitting there because I'm retired, disabled. Um, it's immense and it's dangerous and now the heavy vehicles are coming through. And I just don't think that they could stop on a dime and not hit a house or hit a car or hit a person. And I appreciate it immensely. You know, it would help the offices that can't be there all the time if we have a problem. You know, it's, it's posted thirty and they're doing like forty-five or fifty.
We make, make sense, yeah. I appreciate it. We, we appreciate that you brought this to us in the way you did. Thank you.
What else you should be looking at on Matfield, East Street, Union Street, it's a throughway for truck coming out of Brockton, Spring Street. And I think you need to look at, or get the police after, because through trucking, it's not a truck room. You go to Brockton, there's clearly identified truck room out of Brockton to twenty-eight to here, one oh six.
Thank you.
Well, does that mean you're going to look at it, do something? Of the truck?
Might, but right now, we gave you an opportunity to speak.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's taken into consideration.
Okay.
Does it mean everything everyone asked for, we're going to jump right on?
No, I don't expect you to jump on it, but you could tell the, the police, the chief,
We.
that maybe these guys pay a little more attention. And as soon as the word gets out that they're stopping with trucks, sure, it'll slow down.
So our police. So our police department, in my opinion, does a surpe- superb job.
Yes, they do.
Okay, and, and they're not everywhere at every moment. And we've taken efforts over the past few years to put up commercial vehicle signs so that commercial vehicles are excluded from certain streets. We do the best we can, but we have to stay within moments of the law too. Um, at the same time, the, the police department, again, I think they do an excellent job and there is nothing prohibited, prohibiting any resident from calling the police department at any time and telling them what you're observing. So if you have street, if you have trucks coming down your street that don't belong.
We already have several times over the years.
Okay, so, all right, so what you're telling us is the police don't listen to you? Or don't hear you.
Because they can't be everywhere at once.
Correct.
So you need signs for them. Except if the state or government paid for one of those roads to be tied, paved over, then you can't stop.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to take a vote on.
Do we make the motion? Make the motion.
Uh, you would take a motion.
Make a motion that we, um, we des- the designation of thickly settled of Matfield, Belmont, and Plain Streets and move the, uh, speed limit to thirty miles an hour.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Next on the agenda is, is that you'll recall before this board a few months ago is that there was a special permit looking for a contractor's yard in a heavily wooded area or used to be heavily wooded area designated as zero Matfield Street. There is no street frontage, uh, in West Bridgewater. Uh, the water department also is on notice to the Zoning Board of Appeals that they were against the project as well. Is they encroached on their Water Resource District area. The Zoning Board of Appeals did approve the special permit. Um, and in consultation with each one of you individually, um, I also, uh, well, first I received a phone call from the chair of the water department. He didn't know what to do or what his recourse may be. As a result, I had a conversation with each one of you individually. Um, and, um, and so the, I advised the water department that they did have a right, it's by law. They want to be able to appeal that decision. They had twenty days to do so. There was no Board of Selectmen meeting in between. So as a result, the water department has formally appealed it and filed it on a timely basis. Uh, in the meantime, they do have a budget for legal counsel, but only the Board of Selectmen excluding the school department can authorize, uh, legal counsel. Um, so as a result, I would ask the board to formally approve authority for outside counsel, and we will hire as such for the water department.
Any discussion?
No, I understand this. Good.
Comments? Okay.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next on the agenda is just letting everybody know, we just came back from a great ceremony. Uh, the fire chief did an excellent job. Um, I know that, uh, Denise, you mentioned that earlier at the very outset of it. We're very fortunate to have, you know, a really good chief who wants to be able to make sure that not only does he have a really good staff, but that everybody gets honored during the process. So as a result, uh, we did just have a ceremony at the fire department where Dave Nicholson, who's been with the department for over twenty-five years, was just appointed to the vacant position of deputy fire chief. Recall it was vacant because Lincoln had been our deputy fire chief for a handful of years. Uh, and the second is, is that Jonathan Fonzelas, uh, has also, we, we appointed him a little over a year ago as a paramedic firefighter, and he just, um, uh, graduated from the academy. So we had a nice ceremony over there where family was allowed to be there. Again, I just want to, I want to place it on the agenda because I think the public needs to know how good of a job our fire department is doing. So, and again, give credit to those two gentlemen for reaching the terms that they did.
And if I can add, just to note, no more than thirty seconds after the ceremony ended, uh, one truck and one ambulance was instantly dispatched to an accident on twenty-four. So the ceremony ended abruptly as they went back to work.
It did. Um, next is just an FYI, as, as Jeff alluded to earlier, that we had a major water pipe break, um, on July seventeenth. Uh, it was a bad one. Um, again, these pipes are underground. There's no way to be able to know. It was in the Mayola's app area. The water department was able to locate it fairly quickly, but a lot of places in town did lose water pressure. Um, they were able to identify it, locate it. In an after hours, a handful of D P W staff came in and, and assisted the water department in fixing it. So I just really wanted to give all of them credit. You know, nobody in the middle of the summer really wants to work through the middle of the night, um, at last minute notice. But they all did it and they all stepped up to make sure those residents continued to have the water pressure that they, they expected. So again, kudos to all of them. Wanted to make sure the board and the public was aware. Uh, the A C Town Project, which is, I mentioned earlier, when we had to transfer the money, the project is done. We were able to complete that in less than a month. Um, again, we went out to bid, took the lowest quote. Um, but I think, uh, our employees deserve to make sure they don't come in and literally last summer when it was eighty-eight degrees, sat in their office, did work. In eighty-eight degrees, you know, it's just, it's not fair to them. And so as a result, I want to let you know the project is complete. And the last is, is that, as everybody is also aware, is when we had a pretty significant storm come through, um, on Saturday night. Um, I believe it was July twenty-ninth. Um, you know, the fire chief and I communicated the entire night and through the night and the next day. Fortunately, we had no, uh, injuries and there were no fatalities. Uh, for, at this point, the weather service is taking the position that a tornado did not touch down in West Bridgewater. It looks like it may have briefly touched down somewhere in Eastern. Um, as a result, we did have about a hundred and five mile an hour winds that came through, you know, West Street. Um, I know just off of North Main Street, River Street, some areas in Crescent. Uh, so what it looks like is, is what they call straight wind damage. Is that the tornado is in the air, never actually touches ground, but its force is effect on the ground, is an effect on the ground. But, uh, with that said, our fire department did an excellent job because I can tell you that in moments like this, you know, it's, um, it's difficult. It's dark, it's rainy, it's windy, um, people are scared. And our fire department jumped into action. The chief, um, and I were in constant communication. They were doing a really terrific job. And almost our entire D P W department came out that evening, um, and was able to get the chainsaws going and make sure we opened up all the roads. Again, credit to the fire chief. He was in immediate contact with National Grid. Um, I received the alert, so we know we are able to immediately monitor. There were some places in town that lost power, but for the most part, mostly, people did not lose power for more than a handful of hours. And by Sunday morning, it was restored. So I just want to give credit again to the chief, to the fire department, and to the D P W department as well.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, it is, uh, seven forty. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for joining us.